Thank you. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to also welcome tonight our new director of our public works, Mr. Jared Wright. We are glad to have Jared back with us and we look forward to working with you. Thank you for agreeing to be a part of our city again. We're really excited about that. And of course Chief Frisco and Mr. Charles Beck are in their waning days, I guess, with us, but...
It's his last council meeting.
Yeah, I guess it is. Your last council meeting officially. So, gosh, that's sad. I don't even want to think about that.
Well, let's make them come to the budget.
Okay. You have to come Friday. They'll be there, I think, anyway. But we, as you know, we certainly have always appreciated everything you guys have done to be a part of our city. And as we've said in our past meetings when we've been with you, we will miss you, but we will look forward, I know, for both of you and your retirements. And we'll be seeing you more and we're going to be dragging you back for all kinds of things. But we look forward. And March 6th is when we will be celebrating with both Charles and Chief Frisco at our meeting. So we look forward to that. So thank you. Our first, tonight, we have a special recognition. We would like to recognize our Boy Scout troop, number 254. Amy Green is the, what do we call it? Pack leader?
Assistant scout manager.
Assistant scout manager, thank you. And we are glad to have y'all with us this evening. Mr. Bill, Councilmember Bill, has been with them this afternoon and took them through teaching about the city and all the things that were going on. And, Mr. Bill, anything you want to add to it?
Well, I was really very glad to talk to you this afternoon and I appreciate you coming and being interested in city government. And hopefully you'll be able to earn a merit badge from part of what you've done today. So keep up the hard work.
And we go, we have a pen for you. We'd like to recognize, and we're going to shoot a picture if the council doesn't mind, with the scout troop for evidence that they did come and they were here.
Have to get it for their badge. Citizenship. They must wear that.
No, no, get where you can get your picture.
Okay. Hi, can you sit down?
Y'all again. Get where you can mouse all the day.
All right, I want to take a couple with the flash and a couple without the flash, okay? So stay smart. All right, one, two, three, cheese. One more time, one, two, three, cheese. All right, I can rest. What do you want to say? One, two, three. Emoji. One, two, three, just be happy and smile. One, two, three, emoji. I think I got it.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to bring these fine young boys so they get, that they can learn about what it means to be a responsible citizen of Lenore and how they might participate better in our process and better help as they move through their badges. All these boys have been active in the troop. Many of them have just come from a merit badge university where they've been learning about a variety of subjects, but citizenship is near and dear to my heart and we appreciate your time and hospitality. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, where are y'all, you're based out of?
Trip 254, First United Methodist Church.
That's it, sir. Okay, that's what we thought. Thank you, thank you for your work with this fine group of young men and we appreciate the scout. Scouting program is great, always, we love going and being part of that. Cub Scouts all the way through, it's a, it's a great program. So hope you will continue it, hope you all reach the coveted Eagle Scout. That would be, we wonder, I know it takes a lot of work, but we wish you the best of luck. And thank you for volunteering to want to do some projects in our community and we'll certainly help get some things to you and let you know about that, so.
Mr. Mayor, they're getting ready to have a banquet of some sort of understanding, selling tickets for it, I believe, aren't you?
Our scout card sales will start up very soon. We expect to receive our cards the end of this week, hopefully, and we would love for any help in supporting scouting in the community. Thank you for asking.
Thank you, sir.
I've already been hit up.
We thought you were going to volunteer to pick up one for all. Thank you again for being with us. Our next presentation is a group called The Jarheads, and you guys will have to explain that to us when we get here, an Envirothon team, which consists of five students from Caldwell Early College, which will present their service learning project to our, the council tonight. The project is geared toward Total Educational State Forest, here in, of course, in the county. Envirothon is an environmental knowledge competition, and this team competes under the 4H umbrella. And since the Early College does not recognize this program, they, they also won a state competition in 2017. So we welcome the Jarheads with us this evening. Who's our spokesperson? Come up and...
Well, I actually came today to bring the entire team up here so that we...
That'd be great, great, we'd love that.
We can all tag him a little bit, but just a little bit of an explanation behind the name, in case you guys, if you don't know, Jarheads is a term given to those in the Marine Corps.
Right.
And our wonderful sponsor and leader that has been with us for many, 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 many years is a Marine because once Marine, always a Marine, so you can't say ex-Marine. And so we decided to...
Would you, who is, tell us who?
Charles Stevenson.
How are you, sir? Glad to have you with us.
And so we decided to adopt the name just kind of in honor of him for giving his time and effort to us.
Okay, cool.
So we're going to start right off. So who are we? And we're, obviously, like you said, we're the Envirothon team. We're under the Caldwell County 4H umbrella and we really focus on environmental stewardship and environmental education, which you'll see is shown through in our service learning project.
Hi, I'm Bailey McLean and I'm wildlife expert. We're all students at the little class at school.
My name is Deanna. I do a little bit of all of the subjects.
My name is Griffin Yulsaver and I'm the Soil Specialist.
I'm Renee Austin and I specialize in current environmental issues, which changes from here to here.
And I'm Sam Miller and I'm the Forestry Expert.
I'm Zachary McLean and I'm our Aquatics Expert.
What is Envirothon exactly? Well, we have a competition every year that challenges us in these five subjects that we just listed.
And so with the five subjects, like we said, we don't go into too much detail to not bore you guys and not waste your guys' time, but it delves really deep into each of the knowledge and it's not just reading a book. You've also got to go out in the field and learn a little bit and just kind of foster the next generation of environmental stewards. Like for me, since I'm the soil expert, I can go out and, you know, take a handful of soil and with a little bit of water, I can tell you the approximate composition of that soil of sand, silt, and clay. And so then we have to take that knowledge and apply it towards stuff that's happening today.
So every year we compete at a regional, a state, and hopefully a national level. And at these different levels of competition, we take tests in our respective subjects.
So service, every year we do a service project to give back to the community.
And this is also a statewide competition, so it's not only to give back to our community who supported us throughout our schooling and throughout the Envirothon Club itself, but it is also for competition.
And so one of the things that we like to live by is, I love Albert Einstein and he had a quote that perfectly sums what we try to do in our day-to-day and what we do as a team, is that only a life lived in service to others is worth living. And as Sam mentioned, we really do this to try to give back to the community because all of us pretty much grew up and were raised right here in Caldwell County. Many of us right here are almost in Lenore and gone to the public schools. And so not only do we do an environmental side, helping the wildlife and that kind of stuff, we also try to give back to the next generation of environmental stewards.
So last year's project was, it was a bit of a multifaceted project. We worked within the elementary schools, we worked with fifth graders to teach them about stream health. And then we actually went into the field and we removed a blockage in Zaxford Creek. It was over by Wilson Fields. So we worked with the city of Lenore and all their utilities and we're grateful for that. They actually helped us pull out the blockage and the stream has become extremely clear since then. We actually did a drone flyover, took some pictures, and we were able to see the difference that it made in the stream itself.
Okay, so in going with that, our plan for this year was to add on to that, but from the pictures that we saw from the drone flyover and our analysis of the stream itself, it's perfectly healthy. So we needed to, a new plan to, to take a multifaceted approach and make sure that we were still gearing our project toward environmental education.
So with this year's project, we, we went to the schools yet another year. And this year we were, we went with the same sort of course of study. We focused on stream health, so we talked about formation of the stream, we talked about erosion, and all this time we were relating it to the state standards so we could help students prepare for their EOGs, as well as just take a little bit of a different spin on it.
So one of the first things, it's kind of like we did for you, we created a presentation. It was a lot more interactive. We asked the kids questions, we actually showed them their favorite scientist, Bill and I, short little clip of him kind of explaining what's the difference between erosion and weathering and how that impacts us.
Okay, so then the other part of our presentation was the stream table. So we tried to use all of the things in our presentation and apply them. So we showed them an example using a stream table, which is basically just a table where you can run water through, we use sand in the table, and it shows how eventually water will create a stream and how it erodes away at the soil. So we tried to first teach them and then show them a real-life example. That way they really got a grasp of the subjects we were trying to teach.
And this way they could also interact with the table itself. We had them put in rocks and trees and all different stuff to simulate a forest so they could learn how to prevent erosion themselves.
Also, we had them do a little bit of team competition. We had them do a filter. We gave them dirty water and we let them see how, once the water was dirty, even though they tried their best to make a filter that would get all of the pollutants out of it, it wasn't completely clean again. So once, once the water's dirty, it takes a lot more effort to get it clean again.
Our service project this year also has a component at Total Educational State Forest, which has multiple components. First off, we have the trail tagging. So if any of you have ever been out to Total State Educational Park, you may have hiked their trails and realized that some of their directional signs are a little bit faded. They would like for us to repair those and just spray over those so that, make it a little bit clearer for people walking out there and learning more about the forest.
So another thing that you might have noticed if you were walking the trails, that some of them, they're starting to form ditches throughout the trail, and that's because they're at a pretty good slope. So when it rains, the water will run down those steep slopes really quick and bring, and pick up soil and deposit it at the bottom. Well, so what we're trying to do to combat that, that way the trails stay easy for people to use and it stays healthy, is create something called a water bar, or it'll be multiple throughout the trail. So basically, these are just bars of dirt and like wood that you make throughout the trail. It's like a little hump in the trail that will rake the flow of the water and divert the water flow. That way it won't flow so fast and carry so much dirt. So it'll hopefully keep the trail stable and healthier for a longer period of time.
Also, part of our service project was refurbishing or maintaining the outdoor classrooms. Some of the benches that the children sit on, they were getting rotted or they were sharp in some places, so we put a new top over them and sanded it so that way none of the children would get hurt when they sat down. And some of the bottoms of the benches were rotting out, so we made sure to replace those so that they'd be stable for them to sit on.
And so here are just a couple of the pictures, just kind of show you what we did. It was hard to get a camera out there and have everyone working, so there's not a ton. What we go through, those are some of the sized boards that we have to lug out in the middle of forest to replace the tops. Here we are sanding them because, again, you don't want the children getting cut or you don't want them getting splinters from the top. So not only did we have to cut the sides, which you'll see in the next picture, and screw them down, but we also gave them a nice sanding, just enough so that way it's a smooth edge on it. And then here, you see us cutting them down to size in order to fit the bars.
And we also did some, we're going to do some minor trail maintenance. There's a staircase at Total on one of the trails that the wood's beginning to rot and the, the railings are really unsafe for hikers that will try to use them. And so what we're going to do is we're going to take those out and replace them with new wood and make them more sturdy and safe for people at Total.
So also what went along with this, the Envirothon team and actually Trip 254 helped with this a lot. I recently did my Eagle project, and this also goes along with the environmental stewardship and education portion of our projects. We all went out and we went, we used GoFundMe to raise about $950 towards the cause and we put out some tree identification tags on the Lenore Greenway. So you might have seen this walking along. So really it just tells you what type of tree it is and hopefully raises your awareness for the sort of biodiversity we have right here at home. You don't need to go far to see how pretty cool nature is.
So just wanted to, again, tell you guys, thank you, we're going to go through, and we're each going to deliver kind of like a personal statement, something we learned because not only is it to help the community, but also part of the service project is, again, growing ourselves and growing as a team. And so helping the community is great, but it's, you've got to learn something out of it. So we're just going to go around and tell a little bit of what we might have learned and then we'll save some time for questions if you guys have it.
So I learned a lot about, throughout the course of these projects, I, we had to get in touch with a lot of professional people. So getting in touch with these adults, so you had to make that initial contact. A lot of these include phone calls, emails, or just maybe even casual texts. But even so, these were all professional correspondences. So I learned a lot about making these connections and talking with people in a professional manner.
I personally learned that there's not just one way to serve your community and there's not just one way to learn about environmental science. It's not just about sitting and studying some material, it's about getting out and getting hands-on experience and really getting out into the community to make these connections that Sam's talking about.
This is my first year here, so I've learned a lot about the ecosystem around us that we see every day and how important it is to our everyday lives.
What I learned is that it really does take a whole lot of work to keep up with these trails in this educational forest. You think, once you make a trail and it's out there, it's just there and it's going to be fine forever, but really it takes a lot of maintenance to keep something like this up and to really keep the environment safe.
Well, what I learned was during our project, we had to present to children and typically you don't think anything when you're presenting to a board of adults or your peers, but when you're talking to children, you, you begin to understand that you've got to, you want to make them understand what you're talking about because you want them to learn just as much as you do. So you have to really just learn how to talk to them and that was really fun to do.
So one of the coolest things for me, again, kind of bouncing off of her, was working with the children. I do have a younger brother, so I'm kind of toning it down a little bit, but for me, what was amazing is just how many of those kids are interested, that not all of them knew exactly everything we were talking about. We, like, we hit every aspect of all of our five subjects in the presentations, but they were still interested. And so it was really cool and refreshing for me because even if I stood up there and I said, "Well, you know, you can look at our common soil types in Caldwell County and we've got the Ulta soils and the Paras soils and so on," they were still there listening. And part of it is that, you know, we are youth and so it's kind of like the older brother teaching down to them. But it was still really refreshing for me, as I said, because they were interested in it. They loved playing with the stream table that were led. They were able to see that by just possibly planting a few trees can have such a big impact near their home or near the stream, that it doesn't always take such a huge project that we're doing that every little person can have that kind of effect. The other thing was, again, with the, the water cleanliness, is that just how much work, for one, that the city has to put into cleaning all the water. And we actually have toured some of those facilities and just how much energy and time and money goes into it. I think it was really eye-opening for them and also that we gave them that as a competition. We gave them materials, we gave them five minutes and said, "Hey, look, build something." And just, one of the groups, I actually drank the waterfront, which sounds insane. It had oil, it had pepper, it had salt, it had sand, it had rock, it had paper towels, had coffee grounds, but they were able to, using their ingenuity, come up with a filter design that cleaned the water almost to the cleanliness of the water you're drinking now. So that was one thing amazing for me, just to see the next generation of coming up. And you know, they always say, you know, the kids are the next generation, they're going to be the next engineers, they're going to be the next leaders of the world, and we got to see some of that firsthand of just how brilliant some of the kids are, especially in our small Caldwell County, in some of the small schools we went to. So do you guys have any questions that we would be able to answer for you guys?
I don't have any questions, but I have two comments.
All right.
One, thank all of you because what you're talking about with the younger children, they look up to you. They're interested in what you're doing and that gives them a role model to follow. And Bailey, you said, you know, talking with adults is not a problem, it's just the kids. But talking with adults, I'm very impressed with all of you for the presentation that you gave us tonight. So thank you very much.
And I would mention, Police Chief Brown has applications in the back of the room. We'd like to hire him right now.
Well, I'm curious, I, I want to know what you guys want to do with this. Where do you want to take it in your, as you continue your education? I'd like to hear from each one of you.
All right, I'll start off. First of all, for me, I want to go to NC State, dealing a little bit more with the food science aspect of stuff, but that kind of goes into, we didn't work as much this time, but that goes into the agriculture side of it. And so part of it is, doing this gave us the understanding of some of the state forests and actually we all had to apply as state interns. So we now actually all intern for the state, which is something really cool to say.
So what grades, where are you in your education?
Senior at the Early College.
So me personally, I would like to go to Chapel Hill to go to med school eventually. And even though that doesn't relate directly to all this environmental science and conservation, I'm going to carry with this with me forever. My dad is, what, is a retired forester from the NC Forest Service. So it's always been in my family and I'm planning to take it everywhere when we continue my service and continue teaching people about how we can help the environment.
And in a similar way, I'm interested in attending NC State University and to major in environmental science, of course. I've been interested in current environmental issues since I started doing this competition in middle school and I really want to follow through with services, Sam.
And I'm planning to go to Savannah College of Art and Design and major in visual effects and that's very unrelated to this, but...
Well-rounded.
Yeah, yeah.
This just relates to life.
Yes, and, you know, I've grown up in this ecosystem and so I want to do everything in my power to protect this beautiful nature that I've always loved, so.
So I'm kind of in the same boat as Sam. I mean, I would, I'm wanting to apply to NC State, but I am wanting to go to med school. But I'm definitely going to keep on trying to serve and try and, God, what's the word? I still definitely want to try and help with the ecosystem and still try and be as good of an environmental steward as I can.
Well, I also want to go to NC State.
One, one Tar Heel. One Tar Heel. That's awesome. That's awesome. One more Tar Heel.
That's great.
That's great. I'm impressed with you guys.
We are.
You guys are really, I, we've had teenagers come and talk to us before and you guys are about the most comfortable and, and really well-prepared we've ever had. I know it's tough coming to talk in these sorts of environments and you guys are doing incredibly well. One thing I did want to say is, talking about working on some of the handrails on, you said the staircase. My son, my oldest son is visually impaired and he, and he uses staircases like that a lot and there are so many places where he gets, he gets splinters and that sort of thing. So I very much appreciate your doing that. That's going to do him a lot of good and I'm sure it will for a lot of other people as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
It's great, what you're doing. I tell you, we're very excited. We, of course, love our Early College and glad that we have that as part of our community. Thank you for being a part of that and what you're doing. Wow, I can see, come back this way when all this is done. We, we've got plenty of jobs here for you, I can tell you that. And we appreciate the service that you are, are doing, so.
But to your, to your jarhead back there, you've done a good job.
Yes, you have.
Very proud.
Yeah. Okay, well, we're gonna, I've got something to give you guys and we'd like to shoot a picture with you as we did earlier with our scout troop and, so you'll join us right here. All right. We're good. That's great. All right, that's a good-looking group.
And the council.
Council's up, yeah, council's good, too. All right. Think I can see everybody? All right, I'm going to do with flash and without. One, two, three, emojis. And without. One, two, three. Awesome, thank you.
I'd love to.
Thank you. Good work, man.
Too cheap. Too stale.
We're certainly glad that you're, you're so interested in NC State and Chapel Hill. There is a great school here called Appalachian up the mountain. Would like, would like to throw that in anyway for a little...
There's one farther today, it's just White Forest University down there. Some pine CPAs have come out of that.
Go Diggs. And, and, and Go Diggs. A few music teachers. But we're, we're proud of all of you. Thank you for what you're doing and thank you for being with us this evening. You're welcome to stay as long as you'd like with us. We're going to move on into our agenda. We have one matter scheduled for a public hearing this evening, that's an amendment. This is a non-conforming, single-family structures. We're holding the hearing to consider amending our city's Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Section 704.1 of the Lenore Zoning Ordinance as related to non-conforming, single-family structures. And our staff, who has been working on this, recommends approval of the submitted ordinance. Our planning director, Jenny Wheelock, is with us. I'm going to open the public hearing. If there is anyone who would like to address the council during this time, please feel free to come through. I'm going to let Jenny kind of bring us up to date with this, if you will.
Well, that's sort of a tough act to follow.
It is.
This is a really straightforward code amendment, very minor change. I think essentially what it does...
And hey, babe.
That's right.
We're certainly glad that you're, uh, you're so interested in NC State and Chapel Hill. There is a great school here called Appalachian up the mountain. Would like, would like to throw that in anyway for a little.
There's one farther to the east, just White Forest University down there. Some fine CPAs have come out of that.
Go Diggs.
And, and, and.
Go Diggs. Few music videos.
Well, we're, we're proud of all of you. Thank you for what you're doing and thank you for being with us this evening. You're welcome to stay as long as you'd like with us. We're going to move on into our agenda. Uh, we have one, uh, matter scheduled for a public hearing this evening. That's an amendment. Uh, this is a non-conforming, single-family structures. Uh, we're holding the hearing to consider amending our city's Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Section 704.1 of the Lenore Zoning Ordinance as related to non-conforming, single-family structures. And our staff, uh, who has been working on this recommends approval of the submitted ordinance. Our planning director, Jenny Willock, is with us. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Uh, if there is anyone who would like to address the council during this time, please feel free to come through. I'm gonna let Jenny kind of, uh, bring us up to date with this, if you will.
Well, that's sort of a tough act to follow.
It is.
This is a really straightforward code amendment, very minor change. I think essentially what it does is change the code to reflect what most people think the code already says, that if your house burns down and you have a non-conforming setback, that you would be able to reconstruct in that same non-conforming setback. Happy to answer any questions that you all have.
I just have a quick procedural question.
Go ahead.
It says that staff recommends approval. Did this go before the planning board?
It did.
Okay, I assume they had no problem with it?
They did, yeah. They, they recommended approval.
Okay.
Did it not say it?
It just in, in the agenda, it said staff recommends approval. I maybe, I may have missed, uh, yeah, it says staff and planning board recommendation on the actual council action form, so.
Yeah, it, it went to planning board last month.
Okay.
I've been kinda busy. I haven't read it as closely as sometimes I do. That's my home excuse.
We'll, we'll excuse you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Anyone have any questions, uh, Jenny, while she is here? Okay. Anyone would like to address the council concerning this issue as we are in a public hearing or ask any questions? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, turn it over to council for, uh, any action and/or discussion?
We had a chance to discuss at the last committee of the hole and I think she said it best. It just cleans up what we all thought was there to begin with. And so I'll make a motion that it be approved as recommended by staff.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Purdue to, uh, for this to be, uh, changed. The, it's a non-conforming, uh, as presented by staff. Anyone else? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for your work on that. Okay, we'll move on then. We have, uh, two on our consent agenda items tonight. Uh, item A are minutes from the city council meeting of Tuesday, February 6th, 2018. And item B is a speed limit request for fair lane drive. And our staff is recommending that council call for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, March 6th, 2018, to consider an adoption of a 20 mile per hour speed limit for the entire length of fair lane drive, allowing for posting at the discretion of the Public Works Director. At that time, that will be, uh, our new Public Works Director, by the way. We'll get him up to date on all that. Uh, we do have a note, the city's Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Traffic Section 114, uh, 20 mile per hour speed limit on the following streets will be amended to reflect this change. So, uh, any action on that?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember, really, you like this at this point, anyway?
Just calling for a public.
I'm calling for a public hearing. I'll, I'll.
You'll talk about it later, won't you?
You'll hear my beefs later.
Don't get too happy.
They have a motion from Councilmember Rohr to, uh, to call for a public hearing concerning fair lane drive and the, uh, change to a 20 mile per hour speed limit. Any other discussion or question? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on. It's time on our agenda for requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone that would like to, uh, address the council tonight that already hadn't in our audience, please, you're welcome to do so at this time. All right, seeing no one at this point, we'll move on then to, um, report. We have no reports of boards and commissions tonight, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, you have in your packets some items for information for you. Uh, on Friday, the city council will be holding their annual strategic planning retreat. That'll be held at, uh, from 8:30 to 2 o'clock at the Blue Ridge Energy New District Office there on Cooperative, uh, I think the address is actually Cooperative Way, uh, but it's off Blount Boulevard. So be sure to attend that. That'll be a, a day-long event, but I think it'd be very informative for everybody. Uh, the planning board will meet on Monday, February 26th at 5:30, uh, in these chambers. Uh, the committee of the hole will meet on Tuesday, February 27th at 8:30, uh, third floor of City Hall. The Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, February 28th at noon. And then, as the mayor mentioned earlier, we'll be having a reception for Fire Chief Briscoe and Public Works Director Beck on March 6th from 3:30 to 5:30 in these chambers. And welcome, uh, folks to attend on that, uh, so we can honor them for their service. Thanks, guys. We have one item tonight for, uh, action. Uh, last fall, several members of council attended, uh, the National League of Cities. And at that event, you ran into some folks that I guess were skateboarding, skate park experts. Uh, and I think you talked about, how do we go back and increase usage of our facility here in Lenore? Right now, the facility's, I guess, behind a fence and you have to have, um, park director staff out there to go back, open it up and supervise while you're there. Uh, their suggestion was to go back and, and have it unsupervised, but post the appropriate signage. We've talked to the city of Morganton, who recently opened a, a big skateboard park over there. Uh, that's what they're doing. Also, I think, um, Mr. Story said, Marion, uh, Newton, Asheville, and Boone. So several facilities are doing this. We've talked to our insurance carrier and also the city attorneys reviewed this and they both, uh, say this is probably the appropriate way to go. Uh, still, you need to wear your knee pads, your arm helmets and all those things, but, uh, this is probably the appropriate way to go. And so, uh, you can add anything if you think.
From the standpoint of liability, the legislature statute creates immunity to point, and that's what from, from that standpoint enables you to do this.
Is, is there any, the hours of operat-, what will happen with the hours of operation, Kenny? Are there any changes to that or since there's no supervision gonna be required if this ordinance passes, will they be, can you go skate at about any hour that you want?
What we'll do is we'll set park hours. I'll bring that to you guys and make sure you approve that before we do it. Uh, the one in Morganton, they open from, uh, daylight till 10:00 PM.
Okay.
And then it's closed after that.
Okay.
I don't know that I wanna keep it open until 10:00, but, uh, that's something that we'll look at. Uh, since our facility closes at 9:00, we might cut it off at that time.
Okay.
If you guys approve that.
Is the skate park itself lit?
No, sir.
Okay.
We have some, uh, floodlights around it, but it is not lit.
Okay.
But while the park is, is open, there will be staff in the, in the facility?
Yes, while the park is open, uh, and that's another thing we'll have to look at. We don't have staff there on Sundays, but if we elect to close it on Sundays, uh, that's just something we did, need to discuss on that from that point of it. Uh, we do have people in the park on Sundays using shelters and things like that. That's the only time that we would not have staff on the premises unless we have events going on, uh, uh, on Sundays like the ball fields or something like that.
But with this signage, we won't actually have someone physically standing there supervising them. They'll be, they'll be on their own. They just need to follow the rules as posted.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Yeah, you'd want them to be able to skate on Sunday if they were to.
Right, yeah, sure.
That's the whole purpose. But you don't want somebody at 1:00 in the morning making noise when up and down the ramp.
That's correct. And, uh, we will look at it and, uh, you know, set the hours, but, uh, I think leaving it open on Sundays would benefit the park from being used. And that's our general purpose is to get more usage out of, of the skate park. And it takes away from my staff when I have to put somebody out there five hours a day just to watch two people skate.
Yeah.
And, you know, the hours now, we don't open till, um, 12:00 PM. And sometimes we have people come, this is when school is in. Uh, we have people come in that's older that wanna skate. We have to tell them, we don't open till 12:00. So, you know, we've got some issues there. So I think a lot of this will clear all that up.
I think the idea was, of course, to make it so that the people who are doing the skateboarding want to use the park. You know, right now, the way it is, we're not getting those, they're not using it.
They're locked out.
They're locked out, yeah.
They're locked out and, and the, like, uh, the law states, uh, as long as you wear your helmet, uh, knee pads and elbow pads, we will have staff monitoring it and we won't be on, out there eight hours, 10 hours a day, uh, watching. But if we go outside and someone doesn't have on helmet, elbow pads and knee pads, then we can ask them to leave. Uh, that's part of the, uh, liability issue there with the signage.
I have, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If that particular part of the, of the park is not well-lit, uh, should we consider a dawn to dusk, dawn to sunset rule? Because depending on the time of the year, you know, that 9 o'clock time might be well after dark.
Well, yeah, we, we can, like I said before, what we'll do is, is get together and set those hours depending on seasons of the year.
Okay.
You're exactly right. Um, we do have tennis courts around that are, that are lit some and they are on timers. So, uh, we can take a look at that and see what we need to do as far as making sure we're covered as far as liability with lights or no lights.
I'd like to see, just get an estimate to us on, on what the lighting might would cost to get it sufficiently lit.
Just on timer, you know, dedicated lighting.
Well, I'm, I'm curious to see what the, what the usage will be now. Would you kinda take the walls down and let it?
Yeah, we might wanna see what the usage looks like.
Let them see what they.
It'd be good to have an idea of what the cost might be.
Oh, yeah. I, I agree with you. I agree.
Materials laying around, Charles, that we could maybe use for lighting. I don't know. What do you think, Jared?
Just a quick comment. I mean, I, I don't think it, that you have to have the lighting that you have for tennis courts or, um, or ball field lighting for baseball, softball. Uh, it could be spotlights that light the court up because it's not, you know, it's not a huge skate park like Morganton has, has built, you know.
I also think they even have lights on there.
They do not have lights on theirs and they do not have, uh, fencing around, and that, around their skate park either.
Right.
Okay.
Could be like a security light, could be so. Okay.
All right.
We'll look into that.
Okay.
Yeah, good. Okay. Any other questions or comments from anyone? This was what, when we went to the NLC, this is what we heard from talking to the people who are experts on, on doing these things. This is what they recommend. And so we feel like we, you know, we want our park used and, and that's so, that's what it's, that's what it's about. So I think this would be.
The guy we talked to was a vendor for a company, but we asked his advice on how to increase the usage. And, you know, he talked about his product, but he also gave us good advice about trying to get people to use it more than we currently do. So that was good.
It was. Okay, you heard the recommendation then from the, uh, city staff, city management concerning the skate park ordinance. Um, so I'll call for question if you.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Councilmember Rohr to approve this skate park ordinance amendment as presented. And I'm not gonna read all the numbers to you again. You've got that. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for, Mr. Story, for your work on that and putting that together, uh, for us, working with it. Okay, we'll move on then to, uh, we have a report and recommendation from our city attorney, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, would like to present to you, uh, for your consideration, some, uh, reappointments to our, our boards and commissions. Um, I would recommend to you, these are all reappointments, uh, for our planning board, uh, Mr. Tim Scobie, uh, who has previously served, of course, doing a good job. Our Lenore Tourism Development Authority, uh, Dr. Dana Clark, and Mrs. Glenda Wilson. For our Lenore Business Advisory Board, uh, Therese Oomquist. And for our Recreation Advisory Board, Mr. Scott Barnett and Mr. Eric Robenowitz. I present those to you for your consideration and we will bring them up again on, at our meeting on March the 20th. So these are like, again, say, these are all, um, uh, reappointments. They've all served and, and we all, as I always do, we talk with, uh, those, those who are over the particular boards, make sure they are, uh, doing their job and, and attending the meetings and all that. And all these have been recommended to be, uh, reappointed by the, uh, the different boards that they serve on. So I'll present that to you. All right, is there any, uh, report from our, uh, council members? Anything that you, uh, have to bring up?
Yes, sir.
I often get up in the mornings and check my email. Some people don't believe that, but I do. And, uh, check my messages. But in checking my email, I, I just noticed the reports that Joshua gives to us on a daily or weekly or as events occur. And I just wanna let you know that, uh, I appreciate that, uh, keeping us informed as to activities and what's going on. One in particular, the resurfacing, I read the word milling and I didn't know what milling was. So I looked up milling. So I was educated today to learn that before resurfacing, there must be some milling.
Get you out there and let you do a little bit of that, man.
So Josh, I would just like to say thank you for, for what you do is keeping us informed as to what's going on. And also, Ms. Shirley, how you keep us informed as to what we need to do and all of the things that you help us with. So guys, thank you so much for what you're doing.
Better thank everybody. You know, else you're gonna be in trouble.
Thank everybody. I'll get around to them next.
Yeah, thank you very much. You are, we appreciate all the information. It is really going well and, uh, we're getting a lot of great information out there, keeping not only us informed, but our city informed and, uh, and others. We know there's websites that are being worked on. We're trying to tile those things together and, uh, there's a lot of great things that'll be just around the corner. So we appreciate the work on that. All right, we do have a closed session, uh, tonight, uh, pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143 dash 318, 111 subsection A, subsection four, subsection five. And this, the council will enter into this session to discuss economic development and property acquisition, if we expect. Okay, nothing formal should be coming out of that for, for tonight. And I'll, I entertain a motion.
So move.
Have a motion to go into closed session from Mayor Pro Tem Willis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll go to closed session. If you leave, thank you for being with us. We appreciate it.